All right, we should be good, I think.
All right. So. I still can't. Get my video. Up.
What, let me see, the attendees are. Are you trying to share your screen?
Am I? No.
Oh, okay.
I was just trying to turn my video on.
Oh, turn the video on, okay.
Well, let's go ahead and get started. So, let me, let me jump ahead then to this. Mr. Latimer and Ms. Hearn. Do, do either or both of you intend to speak today? Or are you just observing?
Just observing.
Very good. Mr. Latimer?
Yes, just observing.
Okay, great. So. That should make this process a little simpler and make me a little bit less nervous because I'm not the, the expert on, on running these proceedings. So, and. In any event, let's go ahead and, and get started. I, I think as all you, all of you know, I'm Jim Dole, the city's hearings referee for this matter. This is part of a process for an appeal pursuant to ORS 197 375. First, want to start out by saying that I do not have any financial or, or any other interest in the outcome of this matter. I've had no ex parte communications with anyone regarding this case other than, than strictly logistical and procedural discussions with city staff. It was my intention to conclude the public hearing promptly at 1:30. It looks like we might be able to. To improve upon that schedule. I'll tell you, I am, I am on vacation this week, but I wanted to make sure that we took this opportunity for folks to. To make any oral remarks that they wanted to prior to the record being closed. For the benefit, I think primarily of folks who are attending. By YouTube. The way we're going to do it is this, I'm going to allow the city staff to provide a very brief introduction of the application. That's going to be considerably abbreviated from what's normal. In connection with the typical land use. Hearing process. Then I'm going to ask the appellants representative to speak. And I, I was intending to give a maximum of 10 minutes. I'm willing to increase that. If, if it's necessary, then I'll allow the applicant a similar period of time and then ask. Mr. Selkirk on behalf of the city to provide any additional comments. And again, I'll, I'll. It was my intention to allow for 10 minutes each, but I'm, I'm going to be probably a little more generous. You do not have to use that time all the time if you don't want to. Doesn't appear that we have anybody else online. You know, we might have a couple of other. Newcomers.
Uh, Jim, I believe the other folks that joined are just city staff.
Yes, Mr. Leonard's right. And of course, I know, I, I know Ms. Brooke. So, okay. And. Going through the notes I had. Base, assuming that we were going to be hearing from other members of the public. So, and then I'm going to allow a reasonable time for. For rebuttal at the, at the conclusion. And in light of who is attending at this point in time, again, I'm, I'm willing to allow some flexibility with that. So with that said, again, I, I would like to conclude and I will conclude no later than, than 1:30, but if we can wrap up. A little bit sooner than that, that would be great. So city staff can provide a very brief introduction to this and we'll get started.
Okay, let me just share my screen.
And just real quick, we do have an attendee that has their hand. Raised.
Was that, that looks like.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. We do have one attendee that has their hands raised. I wasn't sure if you were able to see that or not.
I ca- I can see that.
Okay.
Okay, can everyone see my screen? Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So. And as you said, just here to provide a brief presentation on the Middle Housing Land Division application. This was project number P L L D 2024 0609. My name is Michelle Patrick and I'm the staff reviewer for the project. And this is just some context for the application and the decision. So this is a vicinity map of the area. The point 32 acre subject property is located on the south side of Northeast Marshall. East of Northeast Sixth Street and west of Northeast Seventh Street. You can see the property here has two buildings on it. These were previously demolished in April of 2024. The site is intended for an eight unit cottage cluster development with two garages at the rear of the site with access off the alley. Building permits for the eight dwellings and the garages have been submitted, but not yet issued. The submitted application was a request for an eight lot. Middle Housing Land Division reviewed under the Middle Housing Land Division. Approval criteria, which is outlined under chapter 4.3.700 of the BEN Development Code. And the application was ultimately approved with 12 relatively standard conditions of approval. And that approval was on October 20th. Sorry, the next slide. This is the layout of the proposed Middle Housing Land Division. You can see the eight lots in the common area here. And just as a brief timeline, so the application was submitted on October 25th. Deemed complete on November 27th. And we issued that approval on January 10th and the timely appeal was submitted on the 24th of January. And our hearing is today. Now, that's all I prepared to summarize the application. And I'm happy to stop sharing.
Very good. Thank you. So now I'll ask the, the appellants. Mr. Mr. Conti and Mr., you know, I, I hope I'm pronouncing the, your last name right, Mr. Ashats?
Yeah, Craig Ockets. It sounds like.
Ockets, okay, very good. Thank you. Now, I'm, I'm comfortable with the two of you sharing your time if you want, but. If you want to have one or the other speak, that's, that's fine. And I'm going to set my timer for 10 minutes. And. Again, we have a little bit more flexibility, I think, based on the number of attendees. So go ahead and, and let me know what, what you'd like me to, to. To get a better understanding of. And please do your best to, to not just reiterate what's already been submitted. This, this goes for, for all parties. I've already reviewed a lot of the materials. I will review things more carefully. And of course, we have a, a final deadline on Friday for additional written submissions. So with that, gentlemen, go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Dole. Excuse me, can, can we display our videos? I'm not able to display mine.
Yeah, I'm not either.
I mean, it's not necessary, but you know, like to.
No. Yeah, I would, I would agree if, yeah, Maggie, is that possible?
Let me see, um.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Ockets will speak first and then I'll follow.
Very good. And I'm stopping my timer for a moment until we. Catch up.
So no one's able to share their video?
No, it's, it still gets the message. You cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Okay. There we go. I think it should be okay now. Sorry about that.
Are you? Like we're back. Very good. All right. All right, folks. I'm going to go ahead and. And click my timer back on. So Mr. Conte and Mr. Ockets, you can proceed.
Well, my name's Craig Ockets and I'm going to be short on this one here. I, I live at 640 Northeast. Northeast Lafayette, which is. Directly behind the project, you know, 20 feet. And the sewer line runs, runs through the alley. And my concern is the, is the eight cottage clusters and the existing houses along the. The sewer that runs down through the alley and. I'm concerned that it will, it will add wastewater to the current. System that could exceed it. There's no data that. Says it, it won't or it will or whatever, but. I'm appealing based on the applicant's failure to demonstrate that the proposed cottage cluster can connect to a sewer. Main that has capacity as defined in the BEN standards and specs. And I'll, and I'll. And I'll just repeat. What I've stated, if the applicant can demonstrate that the proposed development conforms to the applicable, applicable laws. It should be allowed to go forward, but neither the applicant or the city planner who approved this application have provided any evidence. None at all. To meet the applicant's burden of proof with respect to the public wastewater capacity. And. Which, whichever way you decide, we respectfully request that the applicant must provide valid evidence to demonstrate that a sewer has a. Required capacity before the applicant is allowed to proceed with the, the development. So that's, that's my take on this. There's a lot of people in the neighborhood that are concerned. And this is quite a. This is quite a development for our little neighborhood and. There's, so there, there was a lot of people that were concerned in the actual comments, if, if you took, took the time to read the comments and. But I'm going to defer to Paul and he'll address the. Legal requirements. So thank you, everybody that.
Thank you, sir.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Conte.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Glad we can see at least a couple faces. My name is Paul Conti. I'm one of the appellants and I reside in Sun River at 8 McKenzie Lane. We will be providing substantial argument on Friday. No substantive new evidence, because we think it's pretty clear what we've received so far, which. We haven't actually received any evidence that there is capacity. What we have seen is that the city staff, the applicant, the applicant's attorney and the city attorney. Have all approached this with saying, well, there's nothing really, there's no real regulation that. Would apply here. And so all of the arguments that we've posed are, are just simply not applicable. But today I'm going to make a couple of comments at the end to try and clean some brush away, make your life a little simpler. But, and I want to invite you to ask us any questions. We're prepared to answer those. As I think you know, and I will only, this, I won't be repeating a lot, but the issue here is that the. Regulation in the BEN standards and specifications, additional flow into the city sewer system is not permitted. Where the system has no capacity. We've elaborated on that in addition. Interestingly, and I want to reiterate here, both Mr. Ockets and myself. Believe that essentially if there's capacity, the project should go forward. We may disagree with some of the state legislation and so forth, but that's not. Issue in this appeal. And I think, yesterday I received something from a city staff that I think helps make this clear. So I'm reading from my notes here to make sure I get the right points. Last Friday, I sent an email to the city requesting, quote, could you advise me where to find the city's flow? And capacity analysis for the sewer main in this project? And the response I got was, the ordinance implementing HB 2001 found that, and I want to emphasize this. The city's PFP, that's the Public Facilities Plan, usually referred to as the Public Facilities and Service Plan. But same thing, was sufficient to support middle housing at the densities required by state law. Therefore, no sewer capacity analysis is required for these building permits. That is very, very wrong reading of the law. First off, let me point out what the finding was in that ordinance and I'm abbreviating here. The amendments will not result in the need to adjust or amend existing policies or projects in the city's adopted facility plans. Therefore, compliance with CO 11 is maintained. Well, you know, I'm quite familiar, I've participated on city advisory groups on PFSPs. And as would be obvious, when you assess your current capacity in all kinds of ways, water, sewer, et cetera. And you try to estimate your future growth in residential, commercial and so forth. You have to make sure that the plans you make will give you the capacity for your soon growth. Nothing's ever perfect, so these are usually updated pretty regularly. But one of the things to understand is that if you didn't restrict. What gets done in terms of development, then your planning. If, if your estimates don't hold true and you get, say, five times the density, which is what's happened with middle, middle housing. Then you're in trouble because you don't have the plans or the system in place. That's what we have here. So the problem is that the cities ignored the fact that the BEN. Development Code and the BEN standards and specifications are the guarantee that the PSFP will actually work. And so that's why this particular regulation that's in the standards is critical. Now, I, I may come back to that because I want to respect the time that, that you've set and I don't want to keep you from vacation. I've had to join some of these when I'm in Hawaii and it's not the best thing to do. So one of the other things I want to point out that really sort of illustrates the flaw in the way they're approaching this. Is the applicant's attorney made the sweeping claim in a February, in his February 14th response. And I'm going to read this, quote, there is no, there is not any, he quotes mandatory requirement to meet. BEN Municipal Code 3.10, et cetera. The municipal standard. The municipal code standard adopting public work standards governing construction within city rights. And mandating that such improvements meet adopted standards. The appellants, excuse me, the appellants. Create this requirement out of whole cloth and do not attempt to explain how middle housing land division would be subjected to the BMC. Now, that refers as, as you go on and look at the rest of the argument, to the fact that the. Claim is that the BEN standards and specifications don't apply. And therefore this restriction doesn't apply. But here's what's ironic is the applicant's responses. Appear to be unaware of that the applicant himself lists city BEN standards and specifications. As one of the, quote, in that document, applicable standards, italics in the original. On the first page of the narrative burden of proof statement that the applicant submitted. And here's an example of what he says, as shown on the submitted plans, utilities are provided to each of the cottages in accordance with the subsection. City of BEN standards and specifications and city policies. Now it goes on and you'll get this in the material on Friday. With at least four more cases where the applicant says, yeah, we need to comply with the BEN standards and specifications. That's perfectly reasonable. The, the city response to this appeal also made a similar claim to it. And also, and I won't go in into it here with respect to, for respect of the time limits. But the city itself refers to the need to comply with the BEN standards and specifications. And then if you look at all the code that's around there in the BDC, in the BEN Municipal Code and so on, you find that. Yeah, the BEN standards and specifications are one of the regulations that are applicable and they're substantive and they have to be. Addressed, but they didn't address them. So. In some, you know, this is a situation where. The. Applicant is not asked to do anything that's burdensome, nor is the city. Just do the capacity analysis. The one that I did, I'm not an expert in it, but I'm a technical guy and I know how to read these things. The use of, and there's a lot of red herrings thrown out in the city and applicant's attorney's responses. The method that I used is what's in the adopted Oregon Plumbing Specialty Code. It's arguable certainly whether that method applies outside the boundaries of a development or not, but it is definitely a valid method. And so on the face of it, we have a situation here which appears that the eight inch pipe doesn't have capacity, but it might. And there are other legitimate analyses as well. So that's all that the applicant should be required to do. And that's what, I'll, I'll lead that into, I don't have a clock here, by the way. What's my, where am I at time?
Okay, if you could take it about another two to, two to three minutes would be great.
That should cover it. Okay, so a couple of things I want to do here to clear a little brush out. First off is after a lot of discussions, looking at this and so forth, we understand that. This shouldn't be something where a legitimate application is killed on a technicality. So we withdraw our. Recommendation that it be denied or remanded. Rather, what we'd like to do is see a condition of approval that really gets at this issue. The city has some conditions of approval out there, but as you'll see Friday, they don't really cover this. Requirement to show capacity in the sewer. So that's what we're looking for. And then because there's nothing been submitted in a timely fashion for us to review. We would strongly recommend that there be a provision that says there's some opportunity for the public to. Respond to that. Doesn't have to be a land use decision, could be through the building permitting system, but just what's fair. Okay? So then I want to cover a couple of other things, just for simplicity. We are withdrawing any need to address the argument on the metro plan. Honestly, I know, I know this very well. I've been through quite a few cases and. There's a lot of bad law in those responses, but we don't need to do that because it's so clear in the BEN Development Code itself. So we're withdrawing the density argument, that is. I will address the fourth. That we're withdrawing the first assignment of error. The city has shown us that they have the proper authority to make that decision. On the fourth assignment of error, we will defer until we see whether there's an attempt to ambush us on Friday with. New evidence that we don't have a chance to respond to. That might, this might seem pretty weird. And it is to have a preemptory assignment of error, but if you look at, for example, the case that was cited by. Forget whether it's the city or the appellant of, of the. Decision on a middle housing land division in Eugene, that's exactly what happened. By the way, that reference to that as a, as Oregon law is ridiculous. First off. The hearings official's decision and the different jurisdiction does not, does not make Oregon law. Second off, there was absolutely nothing in the case. You can search all the information, you'll find it never references sewers, infrastructure. Or anything related to it. It had to do with a improper use of the city code. And finally. Well, I think that's actually finally it itself. So thank you.
Well, you'll have, you'll have another opportunity for.
Okay, great.
Okay, so Mr. Holtberg, you're representing the applicant and if you're prepared, you can proceed. And again, I'm going to, I'm going to set my timer. Mr. Ockets and Mr. Conte had about 13, 14 minutes. I'm going to just sign you up for 13 minutes and I just clicked start. So go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hearings Officer Dole, Steve Holtberg for the applicants. 635 Marshall LLC. As you are aware, both Mary and Matthew are online. We're not planning to have them speak, but should you have any specific questions about the project that I can't answer? I'm sure they'd be willing to jump in and answer those questions. Before I get into the hearings, into our comments, I do want to make a few comments about the hearing process itself. I, the notice indicated that there may be an opportunity for rebuttal. Given Mr. Conte's prior arguments about procedural error and things like that, I would strongly recommend that the parties have an opportunity to rebut. This afternoon. I, I just don't want there to be some sort of lingering question that Mr. Conti didn't have a chance to participate. And that said, Mr. Conte used the word ambush. We're not planning on submitting. Any new evidence on Friday, but to the comment about ambush. I know this hearing process is different than is usually established for a limited land use decision. But to the extent that Mr., that the, either of the appellants submit additional evidence on Friday afternoon. We will be asking the hearings officer to reopen the record so we can respond if we need to. We've had, you know, as the, as Ms. Patrick identified, this has been. An open city file for many months and I would be very. Surprised to have a need to submit additional evidence at this point. So if Mr. Conti does, I am reserving that right to ask the hearings officer to reopen so we can respond to it. With respect to our comments, we'll be very, very brief. I, I can't imagine needing 13 minutes. You know, Oregon is in a recognized housing crisis and over the past five years. Legislature has adopted several laws to encourage the housing, development of housing. And to limit the ability of people to challenge housing projects. In 2019, the legislature passed the Middle Housing Statute. That among other things allows a variety of middle housing types on all lands, zone residential, including cottage clusters. In 2021, the legislature adopted the Middle Housing Land Division Statute, which is codified at 92 ORS 92 031. And then finally in 2024, they passed SB 1537, which is a pretty wide ranging bill. That is to encourage housing and to try to limit meritless appeals. All of these measures recognize the housing crisis that we're in. And they are designed to encourage the exact type of housing and land division that is proposed by this application. So with that, I will get into the Middle Housing Land Division Approval Criteria and the Appeal Criteria, because both. Are relevant to this appeal. Middle Housing Land Divisions differ greatly from your standard land division process. Most importantly, under ORS 92 0314, the approval criteria are limited by statute. The city can only apply certain very limited criteria to unlimited, or to a middle housing land division. And these criteria have been reflected in the BEN Development Code and BDC 4.3.700D2. The Middle Housing Land Division Criteria. The, the second part of this is the Middle Housing Land Division Appeal Criteria. And in particular to this appeal, the provision under 197 375. Is that the appellants must demonstrate that there is a violation of the substantive provisions. Of the applicable land use regulations. And that term, land use regulations is pretty key to this appeal. Based on Mr. Conte's representations, they're withdrawing. Several other assignments of error, so I'm not going to touch on the procedural rights or the unconstitutionality of the decision or anything like that. But the point of both of these statutes is to limit both what the city can review. And what parties may appeal as part of the appellate process. So as I understand the appellant's argument, they are saying that the sewer pipe in the alley may not be sufficient. And if it is sufficient, then the project should go forward. I understand that argument. The challenge and the problem with that argument. Is that the city's standards and specifications are not land use regulations. Land use regulations are those, and this is defined by ORS 197.010. Land use regulations are defined as the zoning ordinance provisions that implement the comprehensive plan. That's the BEN Development Code. And in particular, we look at BEN Development Code, Section 4.3.700D2. And as our materials explain, there is no provision in the BEN code in these approval standards. That requires a capacity analysis. Our written materials from, I think it was on the 14th. Identify those limited situations in which the city has required demonstration of adequate capacity. To meet a project needs. Those do not apply in this case. And simply stated, the standards and specifications, yes, will the project through the building code. Review be required to meet any city standards and specs? That's a, that is part of the building permit review. It is not part of a land division process. It is not part of a land division process. Those are simply not applicable land use standards as defined by state law. And I have not seen any reference to a Bend Development Code provision related to middle housing cited by the appellants that has anything to do with capacity. They say that the standards and specs apply, but there is really nothing in the code to suggest that those standards and specifications are approval criteria for the land division application. I had a lot more to say based on other assignments of error that I understand have been withdrawn. Obviously, our written comments address those in full. Should they, those arguments be re-raised by the appellants? But at this point, I think the simple thing is that standards and specifications are not land use regulations that apply to this application. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the hearings officer. You are.
I don't have any at this point, so apologize for that. Okay, so I appreciate those comments, Mr. Holtberg.
Thank you very much.
I understand Mr. Selkirk is going to offer comments on the city's behalf.
Yeah, good afternoon, Michael Selkirk, representing the city. I will also be quite brief. I want to begin just by saying that the city agrees with Mr. Holtberg's reading of the code, both how the middle housing and middle housing land division statutes and code works, how the code has implemented those statutes, and then how those statutes and code apply to this application. So if if I would just repeat what Mr. Holtberg said, but I'll I'll save us all from that. And what I want to talk about is something that's gone unresponded to in the city's written statement. And that has to do with what Luba has called impermissible collateral attacks on city codes. So what I what I think now that several of the the assignments of error have been withdrawn, Mr. Conti and Mr. Akats are saying is that the city's code itself is unlawful. And I, as I read their materials, I think they base that in part on a decision that came out of Eugene that Mr. Conti was involved in. And what I want to highlight for the hearings officer is the procedural difference between what occurred in that case in Eugene and where we are here. So in that case, and the facts are somewhat similar, there was a challenge to the ordinance that was implementing state law. And there were findings that the Court of Appeals ended up determining were insufficient and directed Eugene to fix its code. We're in a completely different situation here. Here, the code, the implementing code was passed about three years ago and has been settled law in Ben for about three years. Had Mr. Conti or Mr. Akats wanted to appeal that, they could have, but they could have, they should have done that within the time period allowed three years ago, and they didn't. And I would just direct the hearings officer to the city's written statement and to the several cases that were cited, saying that it is not allowable for an for a challenger in a proceeding such as this to challenge a particular application based on arguments that the code itself is not lawful, because that is what Luba has called an impermissible collateral attack. And I I could go through each of the cases, but I think they speak for themselves. And I would encourage the hearings officer to read the Nelson case and the Turner case, because I think they're particularly on point. That's all I have. I'm also happy to to take any questions from from the hearings officer.
I don't have any at this point. So Mr. Conte and Mr. Akats, do you have any anything, any rebuttal that you'd like to offer?
Yes, please, I'll try and be brief. First off, I'm I'm not an attorney, as you know, and I don't provide attorneys advice and stuff, but the amount of sort of fog that's thrown into this is somewhat surprising by the city attorney. We do not challenge the city Bend code. We, in fact, rest on enforcing the the Bend code. And I'm very familiar with collateral attacks, and this is not one of them. That's just absurd. The other thing is, is that, as I'll address in the written agreements, I mean, the written testimony, the city case was completely irrelevant to this. It had very, very different circumstances. It was not based on a challenge to the ordinance at all. It was based on some proceed, you know, some procedural and code issues. So that's also just not at all appropriate. I do think the applicant's attorney made some points that need a little more specific review. One of them is, and and please note this very, because I think it's a repetition of what was in some of the written testimony. The applicant's attorney said that the statute said that you had to show a violation of, quote, the zoning ordinance provisions. That is reading something into the statute that's not there, impermissible by the rules of construction. The actual statement is violation of the substantive provisions of the applicable land use regulations. Land use regulations are defined as regulations, and I'm abbreviating here, that implement the metro plan. The BCD obviously implements the metro plan, so the so does the PSP as a functional refinement to the core metro plan. And so do the standards and specifications. All of those have provisions in them, some of which are not land use or not substantive provisions, but many of which are, in fact, substantive, and they are land use regulations because they implement the metro, the comprehensive plan. So that argument fails. He also throws out this thing of all the good intentions of the statutes and the bills and so forth. He probably isn't aware that I've actually spoke spoke at the time to help what then Speaker of the House Kotek understand some of the flaws in the first version of HB two thousand one. She called me, I didn't call her. And those, I know that bill quite well from the inside out. And the bill was both states and was implemented in the OAR to say that cities had to still show conformance with the goals. And part of that is in the way they adopted their amendments. But part of it is also in the OAR, which says specifically that a city of the size of Bend has to work with the applicants on ensuring that there is sufficient infrastructure. There is no mystery here, and there is no missing piece here. If you don't implement the requirement that a development cannot connect to the public sewer system, you're saying essentially a development could have enough dwellings that require an eight inch pipe, but they can still connect to a six inch pipe. It's absurd. None of this stuff holds up either in concept or in law. The other thing about it is we don't disagree that this might be enforced at the building permit level. That's why we're saying a condition of approval is sufficient to approve this. All right, but one of the things that also gets allieded in what's there is like, well, there aren't any specific requirements about this stuff in the middle housing land division code itself, except for that those provisions say that there has to be an active permit. An active permit presumably is an approved permit. And if an approved permit has to show demonstrate that there's sewer capacity, then we're okay with that. So this connects very directly. There's no mystery to it. It's obvious that you can't allow more sewage to be poured into a public pipe that the pipe can't handle, and so it flows out into the streets. And I think that'll, I think that'll cover it.
Mr. Akats, did you have anything you wanted to to add or you?
No, I I'm gonna defer to Paul, but you know, it's a shame that a citizen has to go through all this. I I tried to comment on on this way early on and we were the and when and we had a petition of a hundred and fifty people when they were originally going to put in twelve cottage clusters on less than a third of an acre. And all I got told was it's a type two review and you got fourteen days when they they do the middle housing land land division. So and for the attorney to tell me that it's a little condescending that I wasn't at the party in the in the beginning, and my say is worthless. So that's just my citizen. I've lived in Ben almost forty years, so I, you know, that's it probably doesn't have anything to do with anything, but I I just thought I'd speak, so thank you.
Very good. Mr. Holtberg, do you have anything else you'd like to offer?
I I would. I and I don't think there's anything that I said that suggested that the public's comments in here were, I don't know the word he used, but worthless or pointless. There was no intention of saying anything close to that, and I don't think that we did. I don't think that the city attorney did either. I do want to read the definition of land use decision or a land use regulation, and this is ORS one ninety-seven zero one zero eleven. Means any local government zoning ordinance, land division ordinance adopted under ninety-two zero four four or ninety-two zero four six or similar general ordinance establishing standards for implementing the comprehensive plan. Land use regulation is not a standard in specification that the city has adopted. Those are simply not land use standards. I will also add, and this is, I think, critically important, is that as part of a approval of a middle housing land division, the city can't apply standards such as adequacy or sufficient. Those are just not allowed as clear and objective standards. So even if the city had that in its code, the city would not be able to apply that to this application. So I I don't think that the appellants have identified any specific provision that apply to cottage clusters or middle housing land divisions that identify any basis for a adequacy investigation by the city, nor is the hearings officer obligated to find that that sewer pipe is adequate to serve this project. And with that, unless there are any questions, I will I'll rest.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Selkirk, anything else?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. First of all, the the case in which I was referring to is it's cited in the in my statement on page nine. It is Koopman v. City of Eugene. It's three twenty-seven or AP six. I'm not referring to the middle housing land division challenge that was attached as an exhibit to my materials. So that's the first thing, just to clarify. Similar to what Mr. Holtberg said, the findings that Mr. Conti cited in the city's ordinance were that the city's then existing PFP was sufficient to support middle housing at the densities required by state law. And because of that finding, the city would not have had a basis to add the inquiry that Mr. Conti is saying must be done, because that inquiry was already made at at the system-wide level. So we would have been subject to challenge had we tried to do that. And we didn't. The ordinance was not challenged and is still in effect. And as Mr. Holtberg said, the applicants have met all of the substantive provisions of the land use regulations that have that are that are applicable to this to this application. And then finally, I just wanted to point the hearings officer, and I think this is important, that ORS one nine seven three seven five really requires the referee to, quote, seek to identify means by which the application can satisfy the applicable requirements, which I think is direction to the hearings officer in this process to find a way to approve this. We think that it is approvable as written. We think the conditions are are adequate. But if the hearings officer does not, the job of the hearings officer is to find a way to approve this this development. And I'll rest with that.
Very good. Okay, I appreciate the comments from all four of you. They've been very helpful. They they're getting my brain kind of connected to what I think I need to study in order to make the final decision. I, you know, for future reference, I think this, I'm gonna probably be, if I do another one of these, I'm going to be inclined to to allow for some additional oral remarks, because I think they are helpful, and I think all four of you did a good job with that. Again, Friday's Friday's the final deadline, after which we'll close the record. I think that it, let me put it this way. If anybody intends to submit any additional evidence by Friday, it better be compelling, because otherwise I'm probably not going to consider it. I think we've had plenty of an of opportunity to review evidence, and I don't. The last thing I want to do is extend the the deadline. You know, it's it's statutory and you know, obviously, the biggest catch, at least from my perspective, it says if I don't get the decision done, I don't get compensated. That's not going to drive my my decision making. My I intend to to finish this on a timely basis and give everybody the decision that they need. So I welcome any additional comments. But honestly, based upon the comments, the materials that I've reviewed so far and the comments that you've provided today, and I don't want to dissuade anybody from taking an opportunity to build their record, because obviously, you know, folks have to anticipate the possibility of what the record might might look like on appeal. But as far as I can see at this point in time, the record ought to be fairly complete where we are right now. So additional comments by by Friday, please try to keep them as brief as possible. I've got some ground to cover between now and next Friday, and I'd like to to be able to do that as efficiently as possible. So in the absence of anything else, really of of significance, and please wave your hand or punch the button or whatever. We're ahead of schedule, and I'd like to keep it that way. But otherwise, I'm prepared to close the hearing. And again, I do appreciate the comments from all four of you. And of course, likewise, I appreciate staff from accommodating this. I think it's worked fairly well. And in the absence of anything else, let's go ahead and and close the hearing. And we'll look forward to closing the record on Friday.
Jim, did you see that we do have two attendees that have their hands raised?
No, I don't see that.
Oh, you do, okay, yeah, so we have a Catherine Olney. Did you want to let them have the opportunity to?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I, yeah, that's, I I I looked at my my screen and and I did not see.
Okay.
Catherine Olney?
Yes, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute them, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Okay.
So I have my I have my list of folks who are entitled to notice. And unless I'm overlooking it, I don't see Ms. Olney on the list.
Okay.
Hearings Officer, Hearings Officer Dole, I think I can assist with that. I believe Ms. Olney is with Ben Yimby, and Ben Yimby did submit comments.
Oh, okay, okay. And and I then Ms. Olney, are you? Can you unmute? There you go. Ms. Ms. Olney, are you are you here to speak on behalf of the appellant or the applicant?
Ben Yimby is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, and do you wish to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Please, go ahead. I'm gonna give you a couple of minutes to do that, take three or four minutes if if you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, my name is Catherine Olney. I am a lead with Ben Yimby, which is a volunteer group that exists in Ben since two thousand seventeen and has members that reside all over the city, including within Midtown, which is where this proposed project is. Our purpose is to advocate for more housing of all types in our community so that everyone who works in Ben can afford to live here. Election coverage or election surveys in two thousand twenty-four showed that housing was the number one concern of registered voters in Deschutes County. Ben City Council Public Input Meetings before their strategic planning for two thousand twenty-five showed the same. Our community wants more housing and particularly wants more affordable housing. Middle Housing Land Division is one of the very few tools that allow for affordable housing for sale, not for rent. And that makes this particular project all the more important. The developer has, as was previously noted, designed this project to fit in with all of the by right parameters and has asked for no variances. This approval should be guaranteed. The economists, including Oregon's own state economists, predict that we are on the cusp of a recession, that an economic storm is coming that will displace many of our city residents. We need housing now, not in the delayed someday. And Ben Yimby's members respectfully request that this application be approved.
Very good, thank you. Very good. Thank you. And I also see now Ms. Riedelberger. Do you wish to comment?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you identify, are you speaking on behalf of someone?
Yes, I am speaking on behalf of the applicant, and we submitted comments on February 10th through Central Oregon Land Watch.
Okay, all right. So you're with Central Oregon Land Watch?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Hearings Officer Dole. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Kristen Riedelberger, and I am the Associate Program Manager for the Cities and Towns Program at Central Oregon Land Watch. For over 35 years, Central Oregon Land Watch has been working to ensure Central Oregon's livable future. Land Watch's Cities and Towns Program works to deliver complete communities to our region, mixed-use places with housing options for all, nature nearby, and access to safe, convenient transportation options. Central Oregon Land Watch respectfully requests that the appeal of PLLD 2024-0609 be denied and the application be approved. For years, Deschutes County has been one of the fastest-growing counties in the country, and the city of Bend is accommodating the vast majority of this population growth. While we have made solid steps forward together as a community in addressing our housing shortage, there is much more to do. Bend is still in need of, and due to new Oregon Housing Needs Analysis rules, soon responsible for producing nearly 32,000 housing units over the next 20 years. Middle and infill housing developments, such as those proposed in this application, are a critical part of addressing the local housing need. Therefore, we request this appeal be denied. Thank you for your service and consideration.
Again, I apologize for that little bit of confusion with those two folks. Appreciate your comments. I'll offer, you know, Mr. Conte or Mr. Akats, if you have anything to add in response to those remarks. They're pretty limited, you know, essentially just supporting...
Mr. Dole, there's one more attendee with their hand raised.
We've got somebody else, Ms. Hamby. Very good, all right. Okay, I do see that. So Ms. Hamby, do you wish to speak?
I would very much like to speak. Mr. Hamby, as it turns out.
Oh, Mr. Hamby, I'm sorry.
You're there. I was unaware that we would just be allowed to say what our opinion on this is, but I am a neighbor, and I'm speaking in favor of the appellant's. I think that this is misguided. I think if there is no requirement to ascertain whether the sewer can handle this, what would keep me and my neighbors from then also applying for this and at some point certainly would overrun that facility? I think that the net gain on this versus two single-family homes is probably about four to six people, and I believe that it is going to wreck an otherwise very pleasant, usable neighborhood. I know that there is the call for affordable housing. I would be very baffled to find out that these 800-square-foot houses are going to be anything close to affordable. And if we are just getting this off our chests, I think that there are places that are much better suited for this. Almost anywhere in the new construction of our city, it's going out in every direction, and there is very little benefit and a seemingly high risk that this makes an already crowded neighborhood with street parking issues completely unusable for most of the rest of our neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you. I'm going to keep my list up. It does not look like anybody else is indicating an intention to speak. So I don't want to get ahead of myself again. In any event, I appreciate those three comments. Again, I'm going to offer a minute or so for any of the four primary participants to offer anything that they feel is something I need to know in response to any of these comments. We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Conti and Mr. Akats. Is there anything about the comments I've just heard that you want to remark on?
Yes, I have a long history of being a housing justice advocate. It's a little different than Yimby, but housing justice is really the issue. And just, I appreciate the comments in terms of the need and the intents. They, of course, don't have any bearing on this kind of decision, but they're good to hear. I just wanted to let some of the folks know that I and several others wrote the very first code, I think in Oregon in 2008. I mean, we literally wrote the code, Eugene's land use code, which took a single-family neighborhood with the typical restrictions and allowed every form of development, including before the term middle housing was cooked up, duplexes, triplexes, specifically cottage clusters, got a density bonus, even multifamily apartments. So the issue here at that level is not about the need. It's not about allowing increased density. It's not about making adjustments to code restrictions. It's about doing it in a way that works. And it doesn't work if you let people put more sewage into the sewage system that it can handle. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Holberg or Mr. Selkirk or both of you, anything further? See, head's nodding. Okay, great. Thanks very much for indulging me. I'm not, like I said, I'm not the best at running these kinds of hearings virtually. That's why I kind of am inclined to do them in person when I can. In any event, the admonitions I made a moment ago will remain. Folks are welcome to submit any final additional written comments, but they need not do so, because again, I think the record looks like it's pretty clear, and your points today were all well-made. So unless there's anything else that anybody wants to raise of kind of a procedural or a technical nature, and please feel free to wave your hand about if there is anything that we need to be aware of. Seeing none of that, I'm going to go ahead and conclude the hearing, and a special thanks to city staff for helping to coordinate this. I'm in a small town in Canada right now, and I wasn't sure if this was going to work at all. And we are now officially 32 minutes ahead of schedule. So folks, have a good afternoon. I appreciate it. And I'll be looking forward to seeing any final written remarks by Friday at 5:00.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.